Anything different? Speak up. If not, let's get started. All right. Thanks, everyone, for being here this evening. We will be going through our agenda, which has been posted. Review of the agenda, corrections or additions. Does it mean we have anything that they need to suggest a correction or addition on? Okay, hearing none, moving on. Now, we'd like to take action on approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Would someone like to move on that?
Jim raised his hand.
Jim? Jim, what would you like us to do on that? Are you approving?
Approve. Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Pam. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, we will now go into, by the way, this was earlier, some of you may not have heard, for the online portion, according to the new rules, we need to make sure we do a roll call vote, so we will now go around and JD, if you don't mind.
I don't mind. Jess Ray?
Yes.
Do I have to say Terry's name?
I would go ahead and note that he's absent.
I got that. Okay, Terry Lindberg, absent. Jim Rogal?
Approve.
JD Davis, approve. Caitlin Trunell, approve. Aaron Ripley Guitarric?
Approve.
Pam Lewis?
Approve.
Good job, everyone.
Thank you all very much. And now we move into approval of expenditures. Would someone like to move on the approval of expenditures? And I believe everyone got the information earlier. Payroll is in an email to us as well as the expenditures.
I'll move to approve if somebody wants to check my wording. Moved to approve payroll of two hundred thousand, two hundred thirty-three thousand ninety dollars and twenty-three cents and expenditures of sixty-nine thousand thirty-nine dollars and twenty-three cents.
How many cents? I missed it. I'm sorry. I didn't.
Second time was thirty-two cents. Sixty-nine thousand thirty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents.
Second.
Ninety cents on the bills.
Say that again, Brian.
The expenditures are sixty-nine zero three nine point nine two.
All right, nine two.
And just one note, there was a request a few months ago to Owens indicate how many payrolls, so to all this note for May, it's three payrolls for the minutes.
For a single payroll this time?
Three. Three.
Three.
Three payrolls for the month of May totaling two hundred thirty. Yes, got it. Okay, that was Pam on the second.
Pam's second.
Like it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none called to the vote.
Jess Ray?
Approve.
Terry Lindberg, absent. Jim Rogal?
Approve.
JD Davis, approved. Caitlin Trunell, approve. Aaron Ripley Guitarric?
Approve.
Pam Lewis?
Approve.
Okay.
Okay, thank you all very much. We can now move into the president's report. President's report this evening will be brief. Just want to thank the staff of NPL for all the work they've done during this COVID experience. And I'd also like to thank the patrons of Normal Public Library for the amazing outpouring that they have shown, library, and their understanding and their willingness to work with the library and embracing some new technologies and, you know, coming up and doing Kerbit. So we all do this together. It's a community activity, and for that, we are thankful for everyone. So that therein ends the president's report. So I hope that was brief and to the point. Public comment, my understanding is we don't have anyone scheduled or available to do public comment tonight. So having that, we'll move on to the next item, which is the library director's report. Brian, what would you like to help educate us on this evening?
So you probably noticed that the revenues are down quite a bit. That is due to the property tax due date being extended a couple of weeks, so we expect that to catch back up next month in the July report. We were awarded the per capita grant, which is always good, so remember that we applied for that in the fall, so it's good to get that letter. No idea when we'll get the check, but the letter is a great step towards the check, so we're happy for that. We appreciate that. Bathrooms continue to progress. Waiting on tile at the moment. We had one design challenge that we've resolved. The roof, we were waiting on the metal. The supply chain issue there is available and should be installed tomorrow, so we'll wrap up the roof project this week, hopefully. As Jess mentioned, Kerbit is going very well. Staff are doing a great job. We have really been able to get patrons through very, very quickly, which is great. Our staff are doing a great job, and that system is doing well. So kudos to John for his leadership there and all the circulation staff. The strategic planning process, we are getting ready to put out a staff survey, really asking for their opinion how we can best do what we're trying to do for the community. So looking forward to their input there. Summary program is up and running, digging deeper. Our distribution is coming up very soon, July sixth through eleventh, so all the details are on normalfield.org/summer. It certainly feels different. You know, we're kind of, we have this rhythm in the library and we're kind of out of the rhythm, I guess, as many people are. It's a very unique summer. Thousand Books Before Kindergarten. I didn't want this anniversary to go by without acknowledging what a great program that is, and a lot of work has gone into that, so. Six hundred and sixty-seven kids registered. I think that's phenomenal. Twenty-three have completed it in the first year. Randy Suter and Tori Malickin, great leadership there. Just, it's such a great program because it's so easy to understand, and kids get really, really excited about the various milestones in there, so. A great program. And then I shared in my report a nice comment from one of the parents, so. Non-resident fee, we'll discuss on the agenda later, but we've figured it, and we will go ahead and ask for the board's approval there. More on that later. Probably the most exciting topic for the night, DVD fees and overdue fines. Each year at this time, I come to the board and ask, you know, any anticipated changes in revenues. So as I prepare the budget, we know we're dealing with more or less funding, and we would respond accordingly to that, so. Given the unique circumstances and our desire for a long term to remove any financial barrier we can to library service, we think this is a great time to eliminate both the overdue fines and the DVD fee. It allows everyone access to all the materials. It's it's just a great thing to do. It's certainly a trend nationwide. We want to do it because we think it's right for our patients. We think the timing is great. It feels very, very, everything about it feels good to me, so I hope you feel the same way. I've already taken these projections down to zero for the current year, and when we get to that item, I can share how much we've brought in so far this year, which is very, very little. But in so many ways, it aligns with our strategic plan. I think the timing is great. I think our community will be very, very happy to have the students. There's another perks I can mention to when we discuss it, but I just think it's it's the right time, and it feels like a great improvement for our library, so. Kudos to staff, doing a wonderful job. Lots of transition all the time. We had our first in-person staff meeting recently, which felt great. We were all socially distanced and masked. I thank the board, just want you to know, I thank the board for your support and for all of us during this pandemic time, and, you know, we're so fortunate for your support of staff and allowing us to be agile and flexible. So I just want you to know that we really appreciate your support. And that's it. Unless there are any questions?
Brian, with the monthly circulation statistics, of course, this is now a brand-new world that we're living in. Any trends that, again, we can't really apples-to-apples this now with what we've got, but any trends that you've noticed or the staff have noticed that were a little surprising?
Yes, and I'll mention that earlier today, we had, we brought together our digital content team. We, that group hasn't met in quite a while. When we were looking at, kind of weighing the pros and cons of Hoopla and that pricing model, and we brought in RB Digital, which we just recently learned yesterday that RB Digital is they've been purchased by Overdrive, so you're going to see some combination there. We think that's a good thing, both for our patrons in terms of interface and content, fewer places to look, et cetera, exposure, I think. So we look forward to that change and how that turns out. The trend is, I think, certainly, there's no way to measure print usage or, you know, physical materials because they weren't available for most or all of me, honestly. So what we're curious to see is with Kerbit open, how does the digital usage, which has increased during this time, once print materials become available again, how do those trends look then? Does digital continue to grow? You know, we assume being limited to Kerbit, that that print will not be anywhere near what it is when we're open. But we're very intrigued, I guess, to see what happens. Our discussion today was, we have limited resources, we're preparing the budget, looking forward, how do we balance digital content, physical items? Space is always an issue. Hoopla's pay-per-use model is a challenge. However, those items don't pick up any space, which is a win for us. They're available immediately for our patients, which they love. It's a good app, good interface. So trying to weigh all those pros and cons. The interesting about digital content is it's going to cost us more and more. That trend will hold true for a very long time. What feels kind of interesting, kind of funny, is that there's, we don't need to show for it, what we're purchasing is access, temporary access to content, whereas when we purchase physical items, you can see our collection grow. And it just feels different to purchase access, temporary access, but but our group agrees that is the direction we need to really look into for the foreseeable future. We want to grow our printed and physical collections. There are other questions. When do CDs stop being produced? We're talking about the demand for audiobooks through Hoopla, for example, which is the most popular request through Hoopla versus books on CD. You know, at some point, books on CD will not be produced any longer. So just trying to kind of forecast some of those and then make the most of our resources, trying to acknowledge not everyone has access to Hoopla, for example, you know, some way to consume Hoopla. So how we balance the various means of access that our patrons have with meaningful collections for all, with limited resources. That's the challenge. In a nutshell, I would say that digital usage continues to grow. Maybe not as much as we thought it might during the pandemic time. But we had pretty strong usage before then, too, I would say, whereas some libraries may not have had that level of usage that we saw. So it's certainly growing, so we want to continue to build there. Also, I'll mention the virtual programming, particularly that our children's librarians are doing. Very, very popular. We still have at least two of our librarians, Randy and Lindsay, working on virtual programming because that's the only programming that we can offer, so it feels good to continue to build that what we can offer there in terms of programming, so.
Any other questions for Brian?
Speaking of programming, just FYI from all my parent pals, I've heard really good things about the story walk in the park. I have not had the chance to go check it out yet. I really want to.
Yeah.
But yeah, from hearing about it from other people, everyone was really excited about that.
Great. That's partnership with Normal Parks and Rec, and we heard a comment today from one of our children's librarians out setting up a story walk, that several adults implored about a potential adult story walk. So that's an idea that we're exploring as of a few hours ago, so. Yeah, that's, it's exciting. It's fun to know that these things are working. I think the beautiful weather certainly helps, but yeah, that is definitely a success. I appreciate you bringing that up.
If it's something that would fit with that format, Mike Metica does a social justice walking tour in the downtown Bloomington area that would be very topical and interesting and tie in with a lot of good books.
All right, I'm making a note of that.
Yeah, it was organized by the History Museum last summer. But he has two different routes. One is on foot and the other one is on bike and covers a couple of other extra stops.
Awesome. Thank you. And that reminds me, too, John Fisher is in this meeting, helping coordinate and organize here. He mentioned getting local theater groups involved in this, too, so, which he's been a part of, obviously. So, yeah, I think that, you know, just that saying, adult story walk, kind of sparks a lot of interesting ideas, so. Yeah, so more to come on that. Should be fun.
Any other questions? Brian, how many people have done the Kerbit so far?
I don't know that number.
Just curious, not a big.
John might. John, if you know it, please, please pipe in.
It's somewhere between five and six hundred, but that will not count the people that have just come by without scheduling, which we allow. So five, maybe five fifty for a good round number.
And I should mention that there's also people who are dropping off donations as part of that Kerbit, as someone who has done that.
That was Jess's idea to get a shipping container. We're talking about shipping containers for returns, and we just talked about a shipping container for donations. He may have had some he wanted to get rid of. So, but we did that, and it's been really popular, and that, we heard that request many times before we started Kerbit. When will you start accepting donations? We probably, I heard that probably more than anything, honestly. So we see accepting donations as a service to the community. People want to give their materials to the library and sell them and help the library move forward, so. And many places aren't accepting donations at any time, really, but Bloomington isn't at the moment, so I mentioned in Bloomington that we are, and we're happy to hear that, so. Yeah, we've been getting a lot of donations, sorting through them as they come in, so that everything in the shipping container is, would go to the sale, so that sorting's done. Once they go inside, there's, that's been good. So we are looking for a larger venue to host a book sale, and also lots of volunteers and lots of shoppers for that sale, so more information to come there.
Pam, you had a question?
Do you, well, I'm, us, we couldn't wait to give us donations because we're all cleaning out since we have time and quarantine. Is it feasible, do you think it's going to be feasible to have a sale before the end of year, do you think?
I think so. So we're in conversation with several venues to see, what we found so far is there will be a cost to do it, to have a sale because of the staffing required. Like, you know, maintenance, for example. If we go off-site, it naturally kind of brings some costs into the equation, so we are exploring those options. Another trick is, how many days do we need from the time that we start bringing materials in and setting up until we can have free day and tear down? You know, that's three to four days, somewhere in there, so we're just trying to be cognizant of that cost, that we can keep that to a minimum, still offer a good sale with plenty of hours, and then we need lots of volunteers to staff it, so.
And I'd love to volunteer, and could we put an especially targeted volunteer ask at State Farm, who I think if they give so many hours, then State Farm donates money, and we could cover the cost of the venue with the volunteer contributions from State Farm.
Yeah, that'd be great. That's a great idea. Thank you.
Any further questions? Then that's transition, and since we're talking about raising money, that seems to go right in with the foundation, since the book sale is is a foundation activity.
Pam, do you want me to?
You're on mute, Pam.
We haven't met since we last met, have we?
Right, May, so July will be the annual meeting of the
Right, okay, yeah, go ahead.
We are, the foundation gave five thousand dollars to support summer readings specifically to buy books, so those books came in. So that's great, so those will all be distributed to kids in the community, which is fantastic, and a major reason the foundation exists is to directly impact the community in a positive way, so we appreciate that. Working on getting a part-time development position posted for the foundation, so we've had some interest in that already. There's kind of always interest, but I filled in a few questions. People have kind of heard about this opportunity. So hoping for a good result there. I think our timing is good, so that'll be a game changer potentially for the foundation. Working on the foundation audit, this is their second time around, the audit for the foundation, which is the same timing, same fiscal year as the library audit, so. Much easier the second time around, but again, just a good thing for the foundation to go through this audit process each year. I'll mention to you, in terms of the annual meeting, participate, the officers remaining essentially the same. The board, you know, we've had very little turnover in the last few years in the board, which I think is a good, solid board, so hoping to, I'm hoping this development position can really help the foundation forward.
Anything else on foundation? Well, let's move into our new business then. We have four items on new business tonight. First item on the docket is the non-resident fee. Ryan made mention of it. If you would look in your packet, you'll see he has provided very handily the calculation. None, we'll go ahead and do roll call.
I did just mouth "wait." I didn't say that out loud, I want you to know. Okay, hold on. See elevator music when I need it. Jess Ray?
Approved.
Terry Lindberg is absent. Jim Rogal?
Approve.
JD Davis? I approve. Caitlin Trunell? Approve. Aaron Ripley Guitarric?
Approve.
Pam Lewis?
Approve.
Motion carries.
Thank you all very much. Moving on to our next action item that Brian did mention as part of his report. Just a quick overview that I'd like to share, too, probably as the longest-serving folks. Brian is correct, we have wrestled with this over the years to try and find the right time to do this, and I think we've found the right time. So with that in mind, would someone like to make a motion on the removal of the DVD fees and overdue fines?
Can I just skip some neat history real quick?
Yeah, go ahead, Brian.
So a project that's been on my list for a long time is bringing together all the history and archives of libraries, so we can look back and also for our own sake, but also sharing that with the community. So we found what we believe are the nineteen thirty-eight rules and regulations of Normal Public Library, which is its first year being tax-supported, so. So I wanted to find out when we start assessing fines. And it looks like in nineteen thirty-eight, we just approved the non-resident fee, which was a dollar per year in nineteen thirty-eight. The fines were two cents per day. So to the best of my knowledge, fines have been charged since then, so from nineteen thirty-eight to twenty-twenty. So this really is a, it's a big deal, I think, and it feels really, really good. I also just want to mention that we've found some other information. In nineteen fifty-four, we were collecting about two hundred and fifty dollars a year in fines, so give you a sense of how much there. And then just in terms of the trends, fiscal year twenty nineteen in fines, we had fifteen thousand six hundred and seventy-four dollars. Fiscal year twenty twenty, fifteen thousand twenty-nine dollars, so down about six hundred and fifty dollars. This fiscal year twenty-one, seven hundred and twelve dollars so far out of fifteen thousand dollars that we've projected. I've taken that projection down to zero, this is a reminder. Regarding the DVD fee, I found the VHS collection started in nineteen eighty-three. I believe fees were assessed starting then. Yeah, I couldn't find the actual numbers, but again, just trends, fiscal year twenty nineteen, we brought in twenty-six thousand one hundred and ninety-one. Last year, fiscal year twenty, we had twenty thousand six hundred and fifty-six, so a six thousand dollar reduction in one year in the DVD fee. Several factors that play there, I think mostly people going to streaming, you know, for films. And then this year, we have twenty-six dollars so far in DVD fees out of the twenty-five thousand dollar projection, so. Again, I think, given all the variables, which to me are behind the, you know, our initial focus is to remove any barrier that we can end for usage, but I think these numbers, particularly this year, help tell the story. These are declining revenues, and this year, I would take them down to zero. I think, you know, things are really coming together, but the timing of it being early in the budget process, I feel we can make this work absolutely, and I think it will be very well received, and regarding the DVD fee, it will also open up, we'll be able to share DVDs because there's no fee attached to it, so when you go look on the online catalog, the system like holds, you can select other DVDs, and we can send those between libraries, so that'll open up additional collections to our patients, so expanding access in those terms, too. But I think the most exciting thing is taking that fine away, so that anyone who wants to check out a book, if they have a lost book, obviously have to bring it back, clear the record. But that's, it's great to provide that access. One thing I'll mention, maybe two things. In terms of the mechanics of this, so when does a patient become blocked? You know, there are several thresholds that play in our system. So I spoke to Jeannie Hamilton at Bloomington today. We agree to try to set those thresholds identical as much as possible, so we're going to meet next week regarding that. And we talked about how to best get this information out to the public, and if I could do that together, is our group. So hopefully, that information will be out, I would say, late next week, based on when we can meet, talk about those mechanical issues, thresholds, et cetera.
And I think that's a good point, too, in that other libraries aren't doing this. This is something that a lot of libraries have gone to, not charging for late fees or charging for a DVD fee, for example, so. This isn't, we're not radical in any particular sense. We're finally kind of catching up with what other libraries are doing. Any further discussion, questions?
I had a question.
Yes.
I know when we had talked about it in previous years, we had mentioned that one of the concerns with getting rid of the DVD fees was that it was going to impact what we're able to actually get for the DVD collection. Do you think that's
I think
case, or do you think it's going to change what you guys actually buy?
We've talked about this. So looking at, again, all the variables, the way, you know, Hoopla's, you know, all the streaming stuff, we feel that, and looking at circulation, number of copies purchased. So we see that we will buy fewer copies of the really popular titles. Still buy the breadth of the collection, but fewer copies, and then knowing that there's more and more streaming happening, that takes some of the pressure off, we think. That we think that buying what we used to need in terms of number of copies of popular feature films, we don't need that number now, we don't think. So that's one way that we're going to reduce it. We'll certainly keep an eye on it. We have reports that show us once an item exceeds a certain number of folds per copy, it generates, it lets us know that we've exceeded that threshold, so we need to look to order another one. So we'll keep an eye on that, but we think that reducing the number of copies of popular feature films will certainly help in this.
You know, and this is going to be interesting because the theaters are closed, and so the number of people that, you know, went to the theater to see, you know, some of the popular movies aren't going. And I know the streaming services, Netflix and Amazon Prime and all of that are a lot of the first releases are being released there, but it, you know, it is going to change some things. It's going to take a while probably to figure out, will the theaters open, and if they do, will people go back? And if they don't, will that put more pressure on streaming or more popularity? I mean, it's going to be interesting.
Yeah, I'll point out, too, that, you know, locally, Normal Theater is doing, you know, they have some online offerings that are off, associated with those, as far as I know. But it is, it's a different opportunity than was there before, so I think even, you know, some of the smaller theaters have opportunities to do things a little bit different, so. Yeah, I agree. It's, it should be interesting to see what happens.
Any other questions or further discussion? Would someone like to make a motion then? Jim?
I move that we eliminate DVD fees and overdue fines.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Thank you, Aaron.
Can I make a point? I think we need to be, it's not overdue fines for the DVDs. I just think we need to say either other, like, all library materials, or the way it's written in the director's report here, it could need you to be that it's overdue fines for the DVDs. It could need you to be that it's overdue fines for the DVDs. So, could we put, I don't know if you want to put books or materials or all materials or?
So, what I heard in Jim's motion, I thought he said DVD fees and overdue fines.
For what? Overdue fines for what? DVDs?
I would do overdue fines for all library collection.
Yes.
The whole library collection.
Sorry, Pam, I didn't catch what you were.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you.
And that, we still have that as now corrected? Looking for JD's okay here.
I can, I can copy and paste under corrected. I will do that.
I'm sorry, I did think of just one more question.
Yeah, go ahead, Caitlin.
So, I know that the library also has like some like Xbox or PlayStation games. Are those still, do those have a fee to them?
No.
Okay.
The only fee is the DVD collection.
Okay. Just want to make sure that nothing got missed and to be included.
Yeah, too, that's a great point. So, you know, we've discussed like the Wi-Fi hotspots and things like the library of things, the robots, things like that. So, those, those mechanics I talked about earlier, you know, we want to set those in a way that we can get things back for others to use, you know, more quickly. So, that we'll look at those items carefully too, so.
Yeah, as things were added to the collection, fees were not added with them, right? Because when games came along, there wasn't a fee added for that when some of the other items.
Any discussion of fee? We ultimately decided against it. So, games, no. We started 3D printing in charge, said no, we don't, we don't want to put up any barriers. So, that's why these, we keep bringing up these barriers we hope to take away. So, this gets us where we want to be.
Okay, thanks.
Any, any other conversation on this? Then I'll go to JD and if she's ready, we'll do the roll call vote.
Ready. Jess Ray.
Yes, approved.
Eric Lindberg, still absent. Jim Rogal.
Approved.
J D Davis, approved. Caitlin Trunell. Approved. Aaron Ripley Gitaric, approved. Pam Lewis.
Approved.
Well, thank you all very much. And now, from this point on, JD gets to take a break because that was our last action item of the evening, which would require a roll call vote. So, congratulations JD here.
Thanks to everyone.
We'll have to do the roll call. So, next item on our new business is the 2021-2024 strategic planning process. This is a discussion item and we'll look over to Brian and say, what would we like to talk about on this one?
Just a quick update for the board. So, I mentioned the upcoming staff survey. We anticipate, 4th of July is, we're trying to say we want to put it up before the 4th and give it two weeks. I think that's probably what we'll do. I think it'll go out early next week. We'll collect it the week after the 4th of July. And so, pretty much the leadership team is working with Sue Hall at this point. And it's going really well. You know, again, our focus is on, we think we're aiming in the right direction in terms of serving the community. This, what we're really focusing on is how do we better do it internally? We have two full-time positions vacant at the moment. We're planning to continue to keep those vacant as we get through this process, the budget process, et cetera. We just want to organize ourselves in a way and make sure that our priorities are matching with what we want. So, great timing for this process, given the fact that we're in this very unusual circumstance with pandemic and digital content being so important. There's always changes in what we can offer, so it feels really good. So, I think probably anticipate engaging the board more in this process. I would guess August at this point, as well as the community. We've talked about focus groups, we'll have the consultants here. I would think in August would be my projection at this point. So, this process is rolling along, going very well and more to come as we get further along.
Any questions that anyone has on our strategic planning process? We're going to go into COVID-19 updates. This has been added to the agenda for the current issues that we face. So, Brian, anything that you'd like to update on us for COVID-19 in the library?
Yeah, so lots happened since we last met, mostly curbside kicking off. And that's, we've made some quick adjustments there and that's going really well. Again, kudos to staff there. Patrons are so excited to see us and we're excited to see them. So, it's been great. Accepting donations is a big deal. Accepting returns has been great. We recently learned that our quarantine time went from seven days to three days based on the IMLS Patel study. So, that was great. It allowed us to, it allows us to turn our items around much more quickly and not hold them, you know, just physically holding items for seven days is a challenge. So, we purchased some laundry bins to hold the items initially, filled four of those up the first day. I reached out to Public Works to see if we can borrow some new coders to store, the trash coders to store the items in. Knowing that these would be a very temporary use, so that worked well. They brought those quickly and now we can give most of those back probably. But this, it was really, it's so frequently, we work with various town departments and they support us in so many ways. That was great to, a couple of emails and then 20 coders showed up and we filled quite a few of them right off the bat. But that reduction from seven days to three days is huge for us in terms of storing less and getting items out to the public much more quickly. So, that's been great. You know, questions?
Brian, if I can interrupt too, because I, I had an opportunity to see the setup that they have, which the tables and all of the extra work that the staff have done to make Kerbit happen is just amazing. It's with all the loaders and everything, it's wow.
Yeah, again, kudos to staff and Don designing that. And, you know, children's, everyone's involved. There's definitely a lot of all hands on deck moments. The challenge is, this is one thing that we're uncertain of and we'll kind of feel it out in your next phase, is how do we sustain really expanded curbside delivery? You know, Kerbit used to be a few patrons a day maybe. We anticipate much more than that going forward as I think, you know, almost all retail curbside services will probably be, you know, much more expanded than they were pre-Kerbit too. So, so we're just thinking about that in terms of physical space, workflow, staffing, et cetera. So, the question that we're getting is, when do we open? Great question. I can tell you that libraries around the country, around the state, it's all over in terms of when they're opening, how they're opening, what parameters are in place. Some have time limits, some say no children or no children under a certain age. You know, there's thoughts about requiring masks versus encouraging masks. And to what extent can library staff enforce certain requirements? How do you manage that friction? Obviously, we want to keep everyone healthy and safe. So, lots of questions there. Another common question is, what do you do if it's a grab and go service? Which is how we anticipate, we will initially open to the public. You'll come in, select your items, you know, very likely not any seating, except for maybe some limited computer use that would be very, you know, socially distanced. So, someone comes in and handles an item and puts it back, you know, do we wipe down those items? Do we, how do we handle that? So, one good solution I've seen is you have hand sanitizer programs as they walk in, they sanitize their hands before they touch any items. You know, that would help, I think, if we can encourage that. So, you know, obviously, we can't control every element of this, but we'll do everything we can to make it as safe as possible for the room. So, what I've heard in terms of, there's a lot of concern about, how do we make sure we don't have too many people in the building? So, around the state, I've heard door count has not been an issue. So, the volume of people coming in has not come anywhere near, you know, testing those limits of facilities based on various, you know, like the five, five people per thousand square feet, for example, that's out there from the CEO. So, we don't anticipate issues with door count, which is good. We're prepared to manage that if necessary, counting in, counting out based on sparcity. So, we don't plan to set any appointments at this time. I think we're going to be a little more free flowing than that and be prepared with alternates as we need to. Restroom project is T, so when we planned the restroom project in 2018, we did not plan for a global pandemic to be taking place during that time and hand washing to be as important as it is now. So, Jess and I discussed this a little bit last week. I think that the restrooms will be completed, I would say, the end of July at the, I would say, at the earliest, probably at this point, given some delays. So, it's hard to say if we would open before the restrooms are done. I think we're wise to, you know, really factor that in, that those restrooms not being available. So, we'll see. But at this point, we plan to just go with Kerbit. Bloomington opens up on Monday and we'll see how the reaction is there, how the community responds to the library being open. It's great that Bloomington will be open as an option for our patrons. Obviously, we want to be open as soon as we can, but when we can be open in a way that's safe for all of our patrons. So, that restroom and hand washing is a big piece of that. So, also, it's the construction traffic, which is all on the north side, so right near our main entry. So, we're sensitive to that is an impact too and a factor to consider. So, we'll see. You know, these, seems like these transitions, they seem far off at first and they come quickly. So, hopefully before we know it, the restrooms are done and reopened.
Pam?
Do we have a date for the completion of the restroom project?
So, we've had several challenges there schedule wise. I would say that we're, if I had to say right now, I think end of July at the earliest is my projection based on what I knew right now. So, we had a delay, we're back in today and going full scheme ahead now. The ceramic tile has not arrived yet, so that's a key piece. We're waiting on that. That was supposed to be here today.
Erin?
Do you know what kind of parameters Bloomington's using when they open next week?
I've heard some, I don't remember specifically, but I think they have something out on their site. If it's not on their site yet, it will be soon. So, I know they've written it and the staff have gone over it at Bloomington. I spoke with Jeannie today about that. So, and I think they're, you know, a lot of this, we plan as best as we can, but we're always ready to adjust. We did that a couple of times in curbside and sure Bloomington will be the same way as they open. I know their curbside is really popular and their quarantine has been in the main. Right as you walk in, they've been quarantining their items right there in the new books area. So, that whole physical relocation of items and preparing for public back in the building is, that's something that is just physically, you know, you have space, less space because of quarantine the items. So, they have that big community room, which I think is likely where their items will end up, I would guess. But they'll be posted, I'm sure, all the parameters.
Other questions for Brian? Anything else, Brian, that you want to add?
No, just again, thanks for the board's support in trying to balance all these variables, keep staff safe, public safe. And then we have this unusual situation of the restrooms thrown in there. So, we appreciate your support.
So, next on our agenda is unfinished business, of which I believe there are none. Any suggested items for the next agenda? Hearing none. Just a reminder, our next meeting date is July 29th, 2020. We will revisit and determine whether or not we need to do online. Pam, yes?
Well, you know, we passed the motion to eliminate DVD fines and overdue fines. When is the public going to be told or when is that effective?
So, we, our plan, and again, I spoke to Jeannie at Bloomington about this. We'd like to figure out, we'd like to be able to answer the questions that we know we're going to receive before we put that information out there. So, we're hoping to meet next Wednesday to figure out all those variables together and match as much as we can. So, I would say late next week, hopefully that word goes out. This, this meeting is being broadcast, you know, live on YouTube, so it's possible the word is out already. I'll let our staff know. Bloomington will know. And, yeah, we just like to be able to answer some of those questions. One thing I'll mention is, what do you do with existing fines? So, our plan is just to wipe them up and clear them away. So, something else this will impact is, you know, we'll be handling money a lot less, which is a good thing. And then also our collections process on the, on the end of, you know, when certain accounts reach a certain amount, it goes to collections. So, we, that activity will fall off quite a bit as well. So, a lot of good results have been detached.
Anything else? So, next meeting date, we'll be looking at, assuming that things are still as they are, whether or not it's prudent to meet virtually or in person. And of course dictates on a variety of things that we'll, we'll take a look at. And then, hearing no other, I will say we are adjourned. So, that puts us at 6:17 and we are done. So, I hope everyone has a good evening, enjoy the rest of the week and hopefully you'll all have a lovely, social-distanced 4th of July.